This reminds us.
Dare I do a test? Ralph Barnes, Paul Jones, can you hear us? Ralph Barnes? Paul Jones, can you hear us? We probably don't need either of those just yet, so we could probably go ahead and get started. Are we otherwise? So far, there's no answer. Rob, is there a problem if we get started and have Paul Jones and Ralph join us separately? Given the items that we have? We can get started? I'd hate to have everyone just wait. Okay. Maybe they could call you or text you back when they're, they can hear us. Cannot hear us.
If you recall, last week, we had the same problem. And last time, we had to go out, back in, and that's what fixed it. That's my recollection of what happened last week when we did this.
So, so we'll end this and start it up again?
We shouldn't lose them, it's just me that has to call back in.
Technology's great until it stops working.
You entered nine, nine, eight, one, two, zero, six, six, eight, three, three. This meeting ID does not exist. Please re-enter your meeting ID followed by.
I didn't know the meeting was canceled.
Enter your participant ID followed. You have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting. You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak.
Ralph Barnes, Paul Jones, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yeah, here Ralph. Paul, are you there?
That is I.
Yes, you can hear me now, thanks Commissioner.
Okay, we're starting right on time at 2:10. Good to go. Great, thank you. Well, we welcome everybody to today's commission meeting. And as we do in the past, we like to begin the meeting with a prayer reading or thought that someone could offer as a volunteer from the audience here. And then after that, someone to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Are there one or more that could do these? Eldon? You'll do prayer? Who would like to? Thank you. Eldon?
Our Father in heaven, we thank thee that we're able to be here to participate in this meeting. We ask those who will participate that they might use wisdom and judgment and clearly state their purpose. We ask you to bless the commissioners and all those who are elected and hired to represent the county with their business. Bless the citizens also, that we might be able to be involved. We ask you to bless the Ukrainian people and those others who are involved in the wars throughout the world. Bless us here in the state of Utah. Help us to be more cognizant of the things we need to be doing as citizens. These things we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What was your name again?
My name is Dan Burchet, Commissioner.
Dan Burchet?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Dan. So many people here. If the commissioners don't mind, should we just go directly to the recognition and then go through the consent items after that?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
That'd be all right? Okay. Then we'll start with number one, the recognition for the employee of the month. Rod Wanaker, Corrections. Deputy Rod Wanaker has worked for the Utah County Sheriff's Office for nearly sixteen years, and he's one of the most well-respected and likable deputies in the Corrections Bureau. I think I ran into him a couple of times when I had the tour.
It's wake year.
Wake year, excuse me. It's almost like Sakovic, so I wasn't sure how to pronounce it. Last year, he transferred to the jails industries program where he quickly became the deputy in charge and began running the operations side of the program. He immediately excelled in his new assignment, garnering praise from everyone, everyone he worked with. He is willing to help anyone with anything whenever he can. He cooks breakfast. I need to come over.
Come on over.
Each morning, for everyone. Seven days a week?
No.
Four. Four, just four days, well then, I don't know. He assists with harvesting the jail garden. And for most people that don't know this, it's, we have orchards, we have fruits of all sorts that grow there, a garden variety of.
The orchards are gone.
Orchards gone.
Yeah. We just have the garden now.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Anyway, he helps with various staff projects around the office, and he even trained to rescue goose. That's a story we need to hear. When the operation slowed due to COVID, Wanaker?
Wayne.
Wanaker. Took advantage and began several large projects. Over the course of six months, the entire landscape around the facility was transformed. And Deputy Wanaker cleaned out ditches and added culverts to our water source. He cleaned out several dilapidated and garbage-filled areas, creating several new acres of potential growing area. He helped with the creation of a new lease-on-life program and jail K-9 program. He's also become a favorite among the businesses we partner with. His positive can-do attitude has helped to increase morale and set a positive tone in the office and throughout our program. So with that, congratulations.
Thank you.
So is this a pack of lies, or can you talk to it?
He bragged on me pretty hard, I think, but, yeah.
Well, someone else will speak it up on your behalf there too, right next to you, so it sounds like you've got a great crew there.
Yeah.
I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Let's get a picture or two.
You get where we get, and then I'll get there. Well, we got more ground now, so maybe you can.
Thank you. And we have one other recognition. This is represented by Jake Johnson, who's a member of our Public Works. And, and I'll ask him to introduce the other folks that are here with him. But each year, the weed control supervisor attends the Weed Control Association Conference. And as a backdrop, you know about weeds. We have infestations that ruin private residential farming properties, and there's a great focus to control those weeds. And we have just a couple of members of that board and the attorney that advises them. But this year, it was held in Davis County Conference Center in Leighton. It's a two-year conference where they talk about weed control, and the subject range from invasive species identification, monitoring, management, new technology, and projects within the state. At the end of this conference, they give out multiple awards on the previous year, like Weed for Worker of the Year, Biological Control Award, and a couple of others. One of the awards is for Outstanding Weed Board. There are twenty-nine counties in Utah, and Utah County was chosen for this particular award. They received a plaque and a small amount of, award of a hundred dollars, which was sponsored by the vendor Corveta Agri-science. The recipient of the award was chosen by the Department, Utah Department of Agricultural, as they have personnel attending most weed control board meetings. And this year, it goes to Utah County, which has worked extensively throughout a difficult year of 2021 due to COVID and other constraints. To make improvements to the invasive species program, they continue to do public engagement partnerships with federal agencies, and great important relationships with agricultural groups and organizations throughout the state. Excuse me, with state partners, I should say that. They work through changes of board members, incorporate the county attorneys, and act as a participant in the meetings. And the Utah County Weed Control Board wanted to recognize our people and present them this particular award. So we have this one. So I want to thank you, Jake, excuse me. Going to call you Weed Jake for a long time, but I've got to stop doing that. It's just Jake. Tell us about this.
So you covered most of it, just, so the Utah Weed Control Association has a conference every year, and they asked for nominations, and Utah County got nominated multiple times, and UDAF picked it, picked Utah County. We brought them. They attend all the weed board meetings throughout the state, and they were impressed with the readout that you did. As far as our weed control program, I feel like we have a good program, and we write multiple grants and manage them to address large-scale, noxious weed issues within Utah County. And anyhow, it helps, it helps Utah County and it helps facilitate Utah State Code.
Would you identify that the gentlemen are with you?
So we got Dean Miner. He's with USU, and he's the vice chairman. You're a board member. You're the chairman. And then we got Kim Evans, and we got Ben Staley, that is the attorney that attends the meetings.
And there was a couple others that couldn't be here.
Yeah, we got Rex Larson and Sid Smart, and they wasn't able to attend.
And these are farm members, so they have their own farms, so they know what they're talking about. Thank you.
You should do a picture.
Well, that was fun. Thank you. All right. Now, the next step is we will go through the regular agenda and consider those that we've already reviewed previously on our own. And if there are any questions, then we can, well, each commissioner can have asked that we hold items that we'll then, we'll discuss separately. But all the others that we have no questions, I will put them in consent, and there's no need for a discussion, that's what we'll do next. So we have items one through ten to start with.
Can we hold number eight?
Hold number eight. Did you want to hold number six? There was an item you had there on a resolution.
No, I don't have, I don't have holding numbers. It's, no. It's a letter that I think it states.
Okay.
Its intent.
No need for that one then, okay. So we'll hold number eight. I understand number seven has been requested to continue for two weeks. May fourth, I think, is the date. So we'll continue, because they have exhibits they need to add to that particular agenda items.
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Okay, so we'll hold that one, continue that one for two weeks.
Number fourteen, we're going to have to make, get a recommendation on.
Okay, so we'll hold fourteen? So any others that we should hold other than number eight and fourteen? I understand that there are no closed items, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen?
That's correct.
Really?
That's remarkable.
Good job, Rob.
It's a new day.
So we strike numbers.
I wonder if.
Do we need that?
You can ruin it for us, Bill.
Well, maybe.
We'll see where that one goes.
Someone just wait. All right. Let's keep it going.
So we're striking sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, is that correct?
I'm just, yes, I'm looking at Alice's smile right there. Yeah, kidding.
HR, Ralph Barnes, do you have anything that you need to bring up? I hadn't heard from you earlier on any.
Nothing from me. Thanks.
So we will strike items sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So we have just two items that we want to discuss. That'll be number eight and fourteen, is that correct?
Yep.
All right. Alice, with that?
Oh, I'm going to be so happy to read this one back. Okay, we're going to hold, well, first off, we're going to be continuing number seven, two weeks, to May fourth, holding eight and fourteen. And then as far as closed meetings, we're striking sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Okay. So all the others have been administratively moved to the consent, and it will be shown when the final record's done. We'll go ahead and begin with agenda number eight.
So on number eight, this is, this is a resolution consenting to the Obergeiss annexation into Spanish Fork City. And I know that there was a protest filed on that by Dan Burchette. And he's here, and from my understanding, he and his wife are part of that, but want to be left out. Now, we received this letter from Spanish Fork City, and I just want to make sure, first, I want to make sure that that's still the case, that you do not want to be a part of that.
That we do not want to be forced.
Okay. And so we received a letter from Spanish Fork City that also in, has said that they, they request that the county commissioner approve leaving this, his property in the unincorporated as an island as well. That would, that would leave us with two islands, one being their property and the other one pretty substantial, I think a little further up, right? There's two islands in there. I'm, I'm in favor of doing that, I just want to make sure that that was, that was expressed in, in that. So approval to this means that there's two islands that will be left. It means the county is consenting to two islands, yes. Yes. So just real quickly, a little bit of history, this is the second annexation. The first one was Utah West Annexation, and you did a similar resolution on that one. We were waiting, this was actually on your agenda a few weeks ago. We were waiting for Spanish Fork to actually send me a letter, and they did that. And so that's why it's attached to your agenda here today, or sent the county commissioner a letter, and they sent it to me. After that happened, I was aware of Mr. Burchette's protest to the annexation. And so I talked to the city attorney and suggested that we actually leave two islands potentially, thereby negating the protest. The city attorney talked to the city council, and they were in agreement with that, as I understand. And that's why they have a revised letter that's here on your agenda, that does in fact leave out Mr. Burchette's property from the annexation, so it would be able to stay in the unincorporated county. So, but all you're doing here is consenting to these islands. Ultimately, the city moves forward on the annexation with that consent. Right now, because of the protest filed to the Boundary Commission, this is actually on hold. But if the city does pull, carve out Mr. Burchette's, they could move forward. Any questions on this? This is by state law, you're allowed to do this?
Please come up, yes, come up to the podium, yes.
Before he comes up, any questions from the commission to me, as of now?
No, if we're approving this resolution, it takes into account this, these islands then?
Hello, Dan Burchet is my name. The question I have is about the boundaries. Smash Fork has contested the property lines that we are under the belief that we have. When we purchased the property, we were told that we were buying one acre, and that's what the county records reflect. Smash Fork, in their letter, I haven't read the letter, I haven't been given a copy of it from anybody, the one that Mr. Moore has, that is saying that they would like to leave us out of the annexation. We like that idea, but we are concerned that they're going to encroach on our property lines, and so we are not sure who to speak to about that, to ensure that we are actually being afforded our one acre that we pay taxes on and that we purchased, if that makes sense to the commission. Who would I speak to about that?
If I could address that briefly, so I'm aware of that issue. And what, what happened was Spanish Fork took the legal description in Mr. Burchette's deed, and they, they basically plotted it out. And when they plotted it out, they came back with point nine nine five four of an acre, I believe. The deed says one acre more or less, and that's kind of how the county's treated it as well. As far as whether there's a dispute or not, I couldn't address that, and I don't think the commission really can address that here today. But I think you'd want to talk to Spanish Fork about that issue, if you have questions about that. I don't know that they're looking to encroach upon your property. Because they used your legal description, that you received in your deed, and that's what they plotted out, and that's the number that they came back with. And certainly, you could talk to them about that and work through it, but. So, so Dan, are you, are you paying taxes on one acre or less than one acre?
One acre. That's what the plot map shows, that's everything, when we bought the house, we were sold one acre, that's what my mortgage is for. Everything that we have, I mean, I've never read the legal description, and I haven't hired a surveyor, which maybe I need to, but this is all pretty new to me, you know, how this works. We're in our third year there, and we are happy to be there, so we just want to make sure we're protecting our property. We just want to make sure we're protecting our property and that we don't have developers knocking our fences down or telling us that our field sticks out too far, or whatever, so.
Yeah. Okay. So, and you probably, you probably could talk with Chris on an assessment side and, and, you know, for, for tax purposes, I'm sure, right? Just, you know, look, look that over, or for records, you know, to see what they have as well.
Okay.
Here's, here's that letter, I'll just give it to you.
Thank you. Okay, did you need anything else from me?
You're, you're in favor of us going forward?
Yeah, as long as they're willing to, to cut us out of the annexation. Yeah, that's great. The concerns I had were just about property lines being respected, so. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And this, the resolution will be signed, I guess, in the next day or two, and it'll be posted, and it will reflect that information.
Yes, so this letter, it should be attached as an exhibit to the resolution, which does reference Dan's property, so.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion then, that we approve and authorize the signing of the resolution consenting to the Oberg annexation into the Spanish Fork City. Utah, of course, with the conversation that we, we had with leaving those two islands.
Two islands, I'll second that motion.
Okay, first and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that passes three zero. Okay, we're over to agenda item number fourteen, receive the recommended proposal for RFP 2022-1 for the professional water-related services, recommend the proposal for further negotiations or award of a contract.
The tough one, when you only have one.
Yeah. Robert Baxter Purchasing Manager, that, that's true, it was an RFP for professional water-related services. And yes, there was only one proposal received. It was reviewed, reviewed and looked over by a committee, and they found it to be satisfactory, so they're asking for your approval to move forward with negotiation or award of a contract. Any questions?
I read it, and I don't have any questions.
I don't either, I just told it so we could take the action of approving it and recommending the proposal for further negotiations. So I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero. Unfortunately, we don't have any more agenda items. Are there any public comments? I had to say that facetiously.
Don't stand up already, don't stand up.
Because sometimes we're here as much as five hours, for those who are not, been here very often. Any other public comment? Anything from staff?